I want to welcome you to the Morganton City Council meeting for April 2nd, 2012. Thank everyone for being with us this evening. At this time, I'll call on Sheldon Stevenson to lead us with our invocation. Steve? It's a pollen in my throat, Mr. Davis.
What's that?
No, I'm sorry.
I wonder if any of you saw on TV the other evening, one of the early astronauts, he was actually weeping, crying about the shutdown of NASA and the loss of 7,000 jobs involved in that shutdown. And he also had another deep thought, and that is that the loss of America's front place in space, understanding and work. It seems like that's happening all over now. I mean, and even in churches are shutting down now, some of them because we don't have the money or the thing to take care of them. The spring is a time now when it's bringing to us the beauty of Morganton and the promise of spring, the promise of something that's more than we are, you know? And the, I had this saying that, that spring is more than, April is more than April Fool's Day. Spring is something that's inherent in our life as we think about the next step, the thing, what are we going to be and do. In these moments when much of it is, we don't understand, we don't know what the future may be, we need to trust in the love of God for us, or trust in the strength of God in our presence to be in us what we need to be. And then there's this also, we need to trust ourselves. We need to trust who we are and what we can do and what we can be in life. Yesterday in church, we had palms. I don't know if you've ever seen that or not, but palms, the beginning of Easter week and so on. With palm, the waving of palms is sort of, are taking a hold of the promise that comes to us at this time of year and with the meaning of God in our presence. May we pray. Dear God, dear, dear God, help us to realize your presence with us this evening, now. Help us to trust in your love for us, to do for us what we need to have done, Lord. We thank you for the beauty of life. We're really grateful for Morganton and all of its beauty and its possibilities, Lord. We look forward to spring to be what you want us to be. We pray that you will bless us with spiritual strength to be in us all that we need, to help us to do all we need to do. And we give you thanks for lives to live, a chance to make something worthwhile out of ourselves. Amen.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. I'm glad you mentioned about the beauty of our community because it's, very much so. Our city employees do a great job and private, property owners are doing a great job this time of year, planning early because we've had such a good climate.
Well, you go a long, a long way to find a place that's prettier during the springtime than Morganton.
I agree. Thank you a lot. Okay, introduction of our city council. On my far right is Dr. Alfred Hamer, city councilman, city councilman Forrest Fleming, our new city attorney, Lou Avina. I'm Mel Cohen, your mayor. Sally Sandy, city manager, Sidney Simmons, city councilman, John Cantrell, city councilman, Kelly Russell is recording secretary, and Becky Brinkley is interpreting for our deaf community. Presentation of a service pen. Mike Hassen is not here tonight. He's had 20 years with our recreation department and in the beginning of May, he'll be retiring. So we wish Mike well. Hopefully he'll come in May when we retire him. Public advocacy issues, I just need to mention that we have a Boy Scout group, Troop 184, First Baptist Church. Okay, welcome to all of you. If something goes on here tonight that you don't quite understand, raise your hand. It's probably going to be Bill Davis when he makes the presentation, and we will stop the meeting and allow you to ask questions. So please do that. And welcome to each of you and come anytime, please. This city council and several staff members will be going to a league regional meeting in Hickory Wednesday this week.
Next week.
Next week, next week. And to learn what kind of issues we will have in the short session of the legislature this year. Also want to urge the city council and citizens to attend the banquet for the citizens of the year that are given out annually in April, and this year the banquet is April 24th at 6:00 PM at the Community House. And our council goes, generally speaking, all of us go together, and we would like for you to tell your, the Human Resource Department, I'd like to ask all of you to go. 10th birthday of this beautiful building. We've been in this building 10 years and it is, we've had tremendous amount of cities come to look at what's going on in Morganton and what Morganton did many years ago and the public hearings that we had, and 10 years later, we're in this gorgeous building. And we owe it to Sally and the staff that put us in here and got us in here, and we're very fortunate. Earlier today, I signed a proclamation Relay for Life for Weekend 2012, the proclamation, and I'm going to do a little bit of that. And it's a Relay for Life Weekend 2012, a proclamation, whereas cancer is the second leading cause of death in the United States and the leading cause of death in North Carolina. And whereas it is estimated that more than 1.6 million new cancer cases will be diagnosed in the United States this year. And goes on, whereas, and whereas, now therefore, I'm Mel Cohen, City of Morganton, North Carolina, proclaim May 11th through, and 12th, 2012 Relay for Life Weekend, and urge all of our citizens to participate in this effort to eradicate cancer as a major health problem by preventing cancer, saving lives and diminishing suffering from cancer through research, education, advocacy, and service. Proclaim, Mel Cohen, Mayor, and City Clerk Sally Sandy. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone here on the Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month? I'm going to do the same on this one. Whereas many of our citizens are afflicted with Parkinson's disease formerly, paralysis, agnus.
Agitate.
Agitates, whatever. And whereas some of our residents through our afflicted with, not afflicted with the illness, still suffer from the disease because their tend to loved ones through home care programs. And whereas some of our citizens may be aware that they have the disease and not be aware of it because the symptoms are widespread. And whereas the illness may not be recognized during a routine physical examination by physician. Whereas citizens who have questions or want information can consult the list of healthcare professionals or attend the Parkinson's Disease Support Group, which meets on the third Saturday of each month at 10:00 AM at Grace Ridge. Whereas April is being proclaimed as the Worldwide Parkinson's Awareness Month for all to recognize the need for more research and help in dealing with the devastating effects of Parkinson's disease. Now therefore, I'm Mel Cohen of the City of Morganton, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of April to be recognized as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month, and the city adopted this the second day of April 2012. Mel Cohen, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meanest power, Sally?
Yes, I do have one thing. At last month's power agency meeting, there was a vote as we are all headed into budget season, and they voted to pass on a 5% wholesale rate increase. So that is the number that we'll be working with as we go into budget season.
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda before you tonight. The items on that agenda the staff considers to be non-controversial would ask that you consider adopting those in one motion unless someone would like something removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, the items on the consent agenda tonight are minutes from the regular meeting held on March 5th, 2012, and then tax releases in the amount of $724.32.
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as is. Second. Have a second. All in favor say aye. All right, appearances. We have some distinguished gentlemen here from the ABC Board. JR, by the way, I want to recognize you for being here with the Troop 184. Thank you for coming, and please come back and be with us anytime. Bill, your own.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, the Honorable Sally Sandy, our new attorney Louis and Kelly. Few things we wanted to bring up with you tonight, and in the rush to get the paper out, the Members of Council has the, there's one error in it. The first column, it says July 9 through July 9, 2009 through June 2011, it's July 10 through July 11, but that isn't the part that makes any difference. The ABC Board has been in existence here since 1963. Citizens of Morganton voted in favor of having alcoholic beverages sold and having an ABC July 13th, 1963, and November 6th, 1963, we moved into the building that we're in now. Was that the new building in November? That was the one uptown, then the next year, we moved into the building we're in now. But since that time, City of Morganton has gotten 75% of the profits made by the ABC store. The county gets 25%. That's by virtue of the Enabling Act that was set up when we were allowed to vote. In those years since 1963, the city has received $8,795,365. The county has received $2,931,736. Alcohol education has received $1,001,227. Alcohol rehabilitation, $704,786. And the state of North Carolina, you wouldn't believe they would have gotten a big jump, The partnership we have had with the city, people ask constantly, are you all a corporation? And the answer is no, we're a municipal entity. We're a municipal organization, totally self-governed according to the laws of the state in North Carolina. But we've always felt like that we're part of the city just as much as any other organization tied to the city. One thing that has been a big, big help to us recently, you notice under law enforcement, $1,800,000 has been spent on law enforcement. Within the last several years, we've had a number of law enforcement officers hired by the ABC Board. And the last full-time employee retired three, four years ago. Since that time, State ALE helped us out and this that and the other, but we got into a contract with the City of Morganton to provide law enforcement regarding alcoholic beverages in the city, and this has worked greatly. Captain Lumitti and his group have done a terrific job, and just wanted to let you all know that we are greatly appreciative of that. The other thing that we're more than appreciative of is help that a young lady has been able to give us on financial problems. They change the laws for state, the state does for cities, for counties, for everything else, and ABC Boards are no exception to that. And sometimes we just don't understand exactly what we're looking at. But there's a person on staff here who keeps up with it day in and day out, and I'm talking about Karen Duncan. She has done a beautiful job for us. We've just recently had bids on our banking services, and she was above and beyond in helping us, and we want to thank her and want you all to know what a great job she's done for you, and we know what a job she does for the city. But I hope we can continue to be a successful operation. Liquor is probably the most dangerous commodity that is legally sold. And so it takes constant surveillance of what's going on and looking at people who sell it, liquor by the drink, things like that. You've got to be on your toes all the time because somebody is always going to want to take advantage of any little loophole they can find just looking for the profit angle. But as long as we can continue to watch it the way we have and have the city helping us now in law enforcement, and we're paying the city for that, by the way, I think we'll be in pretty good shape. If you ever have any questions about what goes on down there by the chicken factory, just let us know and we'll give you answers to your questions.
Well, I would like for you to introduce your guests, Mr. Davis.
Oh, excuse me. I have your good friend, Mr. Steve Gregory, sitting here, who's the second longest running member of the ABC Board.
His father was the first chair, wasn't he?
Twenty-nine years, 10 months, like 15 days.
Wasn't his father the first chair?
No. He was the third.
Third, okay.
William Leslie, Jim Conley, Levon. No, he never was chairman, was he?
I thought he was.
He should have been, he should have been. Instead of putting me in there. And the other member, Mark Miller, had a previous engagement and could not make it tonight. Sorry we didn't have 100% here for you. Would appreciate, Mr. Cohen, you allowing us to attend and give a presentation, and it did not last 15 minutes.
What about your, what about your manager?
Gary Harding is the longest-serving employee. He's been there 36 and a half years. I'd been somewhere working for governmental organization for 36 and a half years. I'd have been retired six and a half years ago. But Gary loves it. He just won't leave.
Thank you all very much for being here. We really appreciate it. We appreciate the check monthly. Okay, anyone else like to come before the city council? Doesn't have anything on the agenda tonight. Seeing no one, I go into new business in public hearings. First public hearing, I'll open to consider a water filter media upgrade and financing for project. Sally?
You'll recall that last month, we received bids for the proposed upgrade for this project at the water plant. That project is being designed and overseen by Willis Engineers. You awarded the contract last month to Gilbert Engineering. This month, we are going before the local government commission. We're in that process now to receive the approval to do the borrowing, to pay for this. And so what we did in the meantime, we took bids for banking services and the banking bids to finance this. We sent out seven proposals, received two responses back. Both of those were valid bids, and we are recommending tonight that you consider awarding this to Branch Bank and Trust, BBNT, for an interest rate of 2.08% for 10 years. And know that this public hearing was advertised on March 20th in the News Herald, and that the first debt payment on this, well, assuming we get approved by the local government commission, which I see no problem with, will not be due until 2013, so there's no budget amendment required with this. You have two items before you tonight. The first is a resolution that would authorize us to complete and file the application with the local government commission so that we can seek their approval. And the second is a resolution authorizing the issuance of the installment purchase financing, which basically set the terms of the contract with BBNT.
I'll make a motion and we adopt a resolution. First, I've got the public hearing. I'm sorry. Anyone here to address the city council on this issue? Close the public hearing. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for the LGC approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Here we have a second. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of installment purchase financing with Branch Banking and Trust, subject to approval by the LGC.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Other business, consideration of a request to remove four parcels from the previously approved satellite annexation, Sally?
Back in 1992, the city did a voluntary satellite annexation on attractive land in the Salem area, and this was the old Morganton Dyeing and Finishing Plant and property that they owned out there. Located, you know, a little over a mile outside of the primary city limits. Obviously, at that time, the plant was still in operation. Since that time, they have gone out of business and no longer using it in that manner. There've been some warehousing operations and a few other commercial-type operations that have happened out there over the years. Morganton Water and Sewer Service is available at the plant, but the property just around there that was a part of this cannot get those services. They're served by Brentwood Water, and extending the sewer out there is just not a practical thing to do. In 2006, you actually heard a request from another property owner that had bought a piece of property in the same original tract to build a house on, and the request, because of the lack of services and the distance and where it is, was to ask the General Assembly, who's the only group that can change this property once it has been annexed. And you were favorable with that and asked the General Assembly to actually de-annex that piece of property with local legislation, and they did. We've seen a similar request now. There are three different parcels, three property owners that are in the same situation that have asked that you consider doing that again. You have information in your packet that shows the maps and where the properties are located. If you wish to pursue this, then what we would do is request our local legislators to introduce the appropriate legislation when the short session comes back in, in May of the General Assembly. And that's the item that's before you. You also have in your packet a draft of a proposed bill that would ultimately get used if we move forward with this.
We have one motion.
I'll make the motion to request our legislative relegation to introduce and support a special act which would remove these four specified properties from the city limits of Morganton.
Second. Have the motion, we have a second. Any discussion, guys? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of a resolution authorizing the City of Morganton to reimburse itself from the proceeds of a tax-exempt financing for certain expenditures made in connection with the emergency services electric generator for the City of Morganton Water Treatment Plant, Sally?
This is Water and Sewer Night. We are in the process, as indicated in what we have talked about for several years in our capital improvement program. The generator at the water treatment plant is nearing the end of its useful life. As a matter of fact, it's going to be more than 20 years old this year, and, or within the next calendar year. And we need to replace that generator, so we have been investigating ways in which we could do that in order to have the best recommendations for you to consider. Couple things about the generator, it's obviously for backup power supply and to be used in that manner. However, the other opportunity with this is through electricities, we can replace this generator with a type 1 generator, which basically means that we'll use it for load management purposes. So what happens in that is we get an energy credit on our wholesale bill, and we'll be able to pass that along to the waste treatment fund, to the wastewater fund, and let them take advantage of that. Estimated to be about $94,000 a year in savings, once we get the new type 1 generator installed. In order to do this, there's a little bit of engineering required because this has to fit in with the existing plant, and we have to get rid of the other generator that is out there. What we are proposing and what we have planned to do at budget time is to also issue an installment purchase financing contract for this. And we are in the process now of doing the engineering so that we can seek bids, so that we know what kind of costs we have to take to the local government commission. So what we're asking is the reimbursement resolution, and this is typical for us on any installment purchase borrowing that we think we're going to do. We will adopt this resolution which allows us to pay ourselves back for anything that we spend in the meantime through the borrowing and basically finance those costs. So that's the item that's before you.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the City of Morganton to reimburse itself from the proceeds of a tax-exempt financing for certain expenditures made in connection with the energy service electric generator for the City of Morganton Water Treatment Plant.
Have the motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, this, we're not speaking of a specific item yet. We're just doing a resolution to do it somewhere sometime in the future. Is that correct?
Well, it's to replace the generator at the water plant, so it's a specific item. You don't have a bid for the generator yet because we have to do the engineering in order to be able to put that out for bid and get that. Now at a later meeting, actually very soon, you'll be considering the bids for that.
Bid itself.
Exactly. And this is really the first step, and then the other thing that will happen is just how we just did the resolution authorizing us to file the application with the local government commission. You'll have an item like that in the future, once we have our bid amounts. We really have to have our bid amounts to be able to do that. You'll consider authorizing the application with the LGC and awarding a banking contract, just like we just did on the other improvements at the water treatment plant.
Here we have a motion, second, any other discussion? Don Danford, Don, the generator will be a backup with natural gas, I'm assuming. Diesel. If the electricity's out, okay.
Make a motion to approve a resolution.
We've already done it. Didn't we do it?
Yeah, we did it. I think we did.
We've already got it.
We did.
Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item, consideration of a resolution of tentative award for Cataba River Water Pollution Control Facility. Control Facility Regulatory Compliance Improvements Phase Three Project to Wharton Smith in the amount of eight million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars.
Now we're leaving water and moving to sewer or wastewater, whichever term you prefer. This is the next phase of the regulatory compliance improvements. And that should say Phase Three Project at the waste treatment plant. And this is the one that we've been working on now for two years, about two years. These are the improvements, um, at your January workshop. Kent Lackey with Black and Veatch came and gave an update on the project. We started out with a meeting at the waste treatment plant and a tour when we got started with it. These are the improvements that are in response to the special order by consent that we entered into with Deener to, to change how we deal with, with some wet water conditions and into basically improve the efficiency of our waste treatment plant. On Thursday, the fifteenth, we received formal bids. Black and Veatch, Kent, who is here tonight and can answer any specifics, was here. They conducted the bid opening. City staff members were present. Leah Martin with the COG, who is also working with us on the administrative piece. This is the first time that we've ever been through a state revolving loan process. So it is new to all of us. You'll recall that we were approved for the largest state revolving loan last year in last year's cycle, ten and a half million dollars. We received eight bids. The apparent low bidder, and by apparent, we mean at the time the bids are open, you record the dollar amounts. There hasn't been any detailed review of the bid. And this is a fairly significant bid. We're talking about a eight point seven million dollar project. At that moment, was Hickory Construction. The engineers took the bid documents back, reviewed them, found that that bidder actually did not comply with all the requirements of the bidding process, did not require with parts of the bidding process that are required by the general statutes. So have deemed that bidder as non-responsive. The second bidder was Wharton Smith. The second low bidder was Wharton Smith. Found no emissions or irregularities in the bid that they submitted. Their bid about, their bid amount was eight million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. Our construction budget for this project was eight million, eight hundred thousand. So the good news is that's under that construction budget. Would recommend that you consider a tentative award. And it's called tentative in the state revolving loan process. Um, we have to do this in order to go before the local government commission to get approval and to actually get a bid offer, which they will come back to us. This is different than the other one, John. We don't go out and seek proposals from a bank. The state revolving loan fund is financing this. So they will come back to us with an interest rate offer at the time the local government commission approves it. Most recent ones that were approved were somewhere in the two percent range. Two, maybe a little bit, a little bit higher than two, somewhere between two, two and a half. In order to move forward, we have a resolution of award that names this contractor and allows us to go forward with that process. Again, in May, we'll be bringing back items on this to you because that's when we should have in hand the approval of the LGC and the bid offer. So you'll know what the terms of the loan would be.
Question.
Yes, sir.
We're spending eight point seven four seven million dollars on that and one point seven on the water. What's that going to do to our water and sewer rates?
The water rates, as we go through the budget process, we'll be looking at our capital projects and what's happening in our operational costs. In our application to the local government commission, it does not appear that for that particular debt we're issuing, we will have to, to charge more in water to pay for that. Now, there may be other operational things and stuff that's happened. It's highly likely that over the next several years that you're going to be looking at some sewer rate increases to pay for this. We'll remind you that this is a mandated project. We have no choice, for those of you at home, but to do this project. We agreed to make these improvements out there because we were having non-compliance issues with our permit, our state permit. And in order to remain in compliance with that, these are required improvements. If we do not fulfill what we agreed to do in that agreement, then our fines and what we will face from the state will be tremendous. I do think that it is safe to say water and sewer regulations are the big ticket item right now. We have talked about this several times. Not only this compliance issue, but further down the road, nutrient removal. The new regulations being considered to make us, um, deal with basically for us phosphorus and nitrogen and remove that from our waste stream. Those dollars are tremendous. For the state of North Carolina, compliance with that, it's in the billions. For the City of Morganton, we could be looking at tens of millions.
I'm worried we don't, we don't have choice.
So we, you know. Now, the good news about at least some of this is our water and sewer bonds that we issued in nineteen ninety-five are getting ready to be paid off. And we're still paying debt service on those, and we have been. So the debt service on these kind of slides in and takes that place. However, ten and a half million dollars, because when you add the engineering contract to this, that's a lot of money.
Have one motion.
I move to approve a, uh, resolution of tentative award for Kataba River, River WPCF Regul- Regulatory, uh, Compliance Improvement Phase Three Project for Wharton Smith Incorporated in the amount of eight million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Have a motion. Second, any discussion? One thing, Sally, fresh in our memory, our water rates are fairly low.
Our water rates are extremely low. As a matter of fact, our water rates are so low that that, they disqualify us from several pots of federal and state money that other entities around us are able to get to do projects and to help them out because our water rates are too low.
Another point, uh, that I've realized recently is that, uh, the simple fact that, uh, in our water plant and our waste treatment plant both, that, uh, a lot of that equipment is over twenty years old. And it's far surpassed its useful life. And for the past couple of years, I know that we have taken worn-out pieces of equipment and taken parts off of it and, and patched up other worn-out pieces of equipment to get it to operate for another few months or a year or something. And, and we've got to the point now that we're, we've got a situation where we're operating plants that are just absolutely worn out and it's time to do something. And it, we're going to spend a lot of money in the next couple of years doing this. But we're going to wind up with some, uh, with the treatment, waste treatment plant and also a, uh, water filtration purification plant that's going to be more up to standard than, we're going to be in a better position to meet the state and federal led regulations that's being imposed on us. So for, for the public, that, that might be just a bit of useful information.
They are, they are tremendous assets for us, but, but they, like everything else that we have, every other piece of infrastructure we have, need attention. And, and they need the reinvestment. It's, it's really for us, it's no different than when Cypress or Caterpillar decides to buy new equipment in their process. And they spend millions of dollars to replace that equipment to make their, their product. That's really what we're doing, investing in the ability to treat the water and to treat the waste.
Sally, what's the term of this, uh, proposed loan?
Well, that's what is going to come back to us in the bid offering, once they have approved that. Uh, somewhere in the fifteen, the maybe fifteen to twenty-year range is, is where I think this is going to come back.
This, and that will affect, you know, our rates as we pay it off.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All right, last item is consideration of agreement with Power Secure to provide a generator to Walmart for emergency standby purposes. Sally.
As we were working with the developers at the Henrodine property and as we were working with ultimately Walmart, who will be a very significant tenant in that project. That area is a situation where there is a customer choice opportunity for an electric provider, meaning that the customers out there had the opportunity to choose between Duke Energy and the City of Morganton. Walmart, early on in the negotiations, chose the City of Morganton. And one of the reasons for that is the ability to supply a generator, an emergency standby generator that will be supplied to Walmart, but will also serve just as the one we talked about at the water plant, as a type-one generator that'll be able to be used for load management purposes in the total system. Electric Cities has done several of these deals in other communities in the state and, and with Walmart. And the, this is a public-private partnership, basically. Power Supply is a, um, private partner who provides the generators. The agreement you have before you tonight will be in agreement where Power Supply would provide that generator at no cost to the city and at no cost to Walmart. They basically will install that generator, operate that generator. The energy credits that will be generated based on that and the load management opportunities will basically then come through the city's monthly power bill in, in some manner. And then we will be paying Power Supply that savings. That's how they get paid for furnishing a fairly expensive piece of equipment and allowing that to be used. And everybody gets the benefit from that. So that is the agreement before you tonight. I will tell you that Lincolnon has used this agreement and someone in the east has also used this agreement. It's an opportunity, I think, where through another type of public-private partnership, we're able to provide something that a pretty substantial customer and a pretty big player in, in the economic development of our community will be able to take advantage of.
Very good. Make a motion to approve the generator contract between Power Secure and the City of Morganton. Have the motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and, uh, ask the troop one eighty-four and, uh, the leaders if, uh, they would be interested in asking any questions of us before we leave tonight. I'm surprised, JR, you don't have any questions. Your vast experience. I'm sure. I'm sure of that.
It was a lot of fun. These, these guys are, are really sharp. They, um, they had good questions. They had done their homework. And, and they have a lot of good opinions and good ideas, too. We're lucky to have them.
Please come back often. I mean that sincerely. Thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.